Evening, it's seven o'clock and I'll call the September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen School Board Member to order, meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mayor, if you would do the roll call, please?
I would be happy to. Gary Dunlap, I believe, is excused.
Excused, yes.
All right. Um, Tom Cruise?
I think he's coming. He may just be delayed.
All right. So, question mark. Jeff Young, are you here?
Here.
Cheryl Hancock?
Here.
Anita Jekosinski?
Here.
I'm here. Lisa Collins?
Here.
And Tim Miniker?
Here.
Okay, so with five of the seven School Board Members present, I would declare a quorum. Board norms, I would just remind you that the board norms are in your blue folders if you want to take a look at them or refer to them as we proceed through tonight's meeting. Approval of the agenda, I would note that the agenda has been printed, distributed, and sent to the local media with this in mind. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
I would so approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as published. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board relative to any item at this time? We ask that a five-minute time period per person be followed. Please come forward, state your name, address, and topic to be addressed. And I don't see anyone this evening, so we'll move on to welcome-back video and update.
This evening, I just wanted to share with the board that we had much planning going into our opening ceremonies this year, and I had a lot of great help with, from our district leadership team. And the district leadership team together came up with a motto, and as you can see in front of you tonight, we're sharing what we shared with our staff. They got the "You Matter" fan, because it gets warm in the gym, and clip, in letting them know that they matter. And then we also dedicated recently all of our early release days as "You Matter" days in the district, so our staff can wear their "You Matter" T-shirts and, in any way they would like, can dedicate or let someone know why they matter to them in the district. So, I'm so impressed, and if you go by the Transportation Maintenance Technology Building, you'll see they've even went to Level Two, and they have a nice sign on their window as to how you matter. So, it's been wonderful, the positive nature spreading, and people are, have been great with that. So, tonight, the other special part about opening ceremony is it is our hundredth year anniversary of the class of nineteen sixteen, and there's been lots of collaboration with community members about this. We have a long history of families in the community, and we were very fortunate that Elaine Nelson and Maria Dummer joined us on opening day and were able to share stories of their family members back from the class of nineteen sixteen. And the tradition, we do have some people coming to join us for the homecoming parade, some from far distances to participate on a float. So, it's just, and we also have our seniors that are very excited about their graduation ceremony, working hard on gathering information. But tonight, what I wanted to do is share with you kind of our welcome-back video that we shared with the staff that day.
We do a full screen?
Yeah. That's nice. I don't know where it is. Oh, every time I watch it, I just, I love it.
I remember being there, too. The only thing missing in the video that people who watch this will not realize is that there were hundreds of people on their feet laughing and cheering and clapping, and it was like an extraordinary opening.
Yep, and you know, we were greeted in the morning with the band playing, and so like the pep band playing and walking in with that energy, and then you had the video, and then that message of "You Matter" throughout, the sharing of their mothers, I think in both cases, it was their mothers who were classmates for that first class, and even seeing a videotape of the valedictorian, one of the valedictorians deliver her when she was ninety-something, but she had that speech memorized still when she was ninety. They taped her delivering her speech. And, you know, just the energy, and I know that, Dr. Muller, you said that they took that theme then back to their buildings and used that in their buildings to create the professional development and in-service with their staff in the building, so very well done. And I just wanted to see, have it as a record, so folks out in the community could see it as well. I know it's on the webpage, I think, there's a link, but, and the board members who weren't able to make it, so they could see that, so well done, and I hope it's a sign of the year and the kind of energy we're going to have this year.
I think Ken Burns should get a copy of this and put it on like American Experience or something.
Yeah, the lip-syncing skills, maybe you need to work on those for next year, all but, other than that.
Already a little criticism.
Oh, no, 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 no. She said it to me, so.
No, I'll work on improvement on my rubric on that one, but I just, what was, just one comment about it, the amazing part of it was, we had an administrator helping with writing the script, and then we had faculty and staff that helped, I mean, we had Samantha Weiss, who actually sang that song herself, a staff member, she, and we had Mr. Vogler that helped write the script, he wrote the song, and then we had Abe, who did the whole editing. I mean, talk about a team effort, you know, I could not, it wasn't me, it was them that did that. I just showed up and couldn't lip-sync very well, but anyways, so I just, I just wanted to thank all those folks that helped make that happen, so, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I just, can I just say, this is the first, in eighteen years, this is the first time I had been able to go to the opening in-service, the welcome-back, and I was, I didn't know what to expect. I didn't expect that. I was kind of like blown away. I, the looks of the faces and people contacting me and saying, "Do you realize what just happened? Do you realize it's not ever like this? This is so awesome." And I was like, "Oh, oh, I guess we'll have to keep it up." So, thank you, everybody who was involved in that, on behalf of all the people who I heard from, and me, for, to be my very first time in eighteen years to get to see that. Wow, that was phenomenal. What a way to welcome people back. That was great. So, thank you, all of you that did that.
Wonderful. Well, then, let's move on to reports and discussions, the auditor's report. Julie? So, we go from that to the auditor's report.
Exciting.
Yes.
Good evening. I provided for you, hot off the press, delivered this afternoon, your financial statement book and a copy of the management letter. This is the first we have seen of the management letter as well, so Jay and I are still, got some work going through it, but I will give you the highlights of the letter and allow you to read that in your own time and ask questions at another time if necessary. Tonight, I'm going to present just the highlights of the audit report, and at the next meeting, the annual meeting, the board meeting, the treasures report, at the end of the month, Jay and Ms. Collins will present more detail in the treasures report on the audit of financial statements for fourteen fifteen. As indicated in the issue paper for the audit report, the auditors did present to the finance committee on August twenty-fourth. And the preliminary comments, and the comments in the, you actually have the real one in front of you, I didn't have this last week when we were posting to the Dropbox. The comments from the auditor are that this is an unmodified opinion. This is just a change in language from previous language. They used to say "unqualified," sort of a double negative, because what we are actually looking for is an unmodified opinion, that is a good thing. And with that, this year, there are no findings reported in the management letter. The unmodified opinion gives a fair and true view in accordance with the financial framework as it's presented, and it's also called a clean opinion. That means they do not have any reservation, significant reservation in respect to the financial statements. In the management letter, you will find that there are three recommendations. They are not findings in accordance with government accounting practices, but there are three findings, so I did want to bring them up to you this evening. The first one that's identified is a recommendation to develop a procedure for outstanding checks. We have began that process already, actually, I think Ben started it before I got here, and the process did not get completed in the business services office, but we will be developing a process and writing down how that'll work and the responsibilities. And this has to do with writing off your outstanding checks that are really old and turning over to unclaimed property in Wisconsin. So, that process will be developed this year. The second one is in regards to reseating at the middle school. They had some concerns in reseating. We'll be looking at that. I'll meet with the middle school office to talk more about their procedures, but one of the things they were recommending, I don't think we'll go this far, is actually reseating to each student. Let me give you an example of what they were talking about. If students bring field trip money to their teacher, they're expecting a reseating process. That is really cumbersome and inefficient. We'll look at what their procedures are and try to identify greater internal controls for the middle school, so that there is a better trail from the classroom to the office, the office to the bank, just to make sure that those procedures are being followed and are good quality internal control procedures. To get to the level of teacher to student, I think, is too cumbersome. We just need to have a better way to report it. Maybe it's just a list of students that paid. We'll take a look at that, but, you know, they're very busy, and that'll be pretty cumbersome, so we'll look at cleaning then up and getting the conversation and auditor's opinion on how that should look in the future. The third one has to do with tracking personal property tax chargebacks. This refers to when the municipality does not collect all of their tax receipts from individual property owners, they invoice the district for the portion that we have to reimburse the municipality. The auditor wants to see a tracking of those chargebacks, and so we have to work with the auditor to develop what that looks like or what their expectation is. This next page is a screenshot of page eight in the financial statements. I chose this page because I was looking at last year's report to the board, and Cheryl, you had asked specifically to, to better explain the difference between general building and central services, and so I didn't know if that ever came back to you as an explanation, and I thought I would just give a brief explanation to the board of what the difference is between those three areas in the middle of the screen. The general administration services includes Board of Education, election, legal, school census, audit, office superintendent, community relations, staff relations, negotiations, state and federal relations, and other district and general administration. The building level includes the Office of the Principal and other school building administration, and then central refers to human resources, staff development, wellness initiatives, and also includes technology operations. If there's other areas within the report or the function description, please don't hesitate to email me. Tom actually did this afternoon. He had some questions specifically about the breakdown in instruction from undifferentiated, regular vocational, et cetera, so we'll be getting back to him to explain further what those function definitions mean in the Woofr manual and how they are laid out here in these reports. This slide shows a section of the audit report called the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. It is reported here as the financial statements are being issued, an unmodified opinion, like we talked about, and that means there are no material weaknesses, deficiencies, or non-compliance items. I've just taken a cross-section of each of the pages in this area of the report. This is the same unmodified opinion for the federal and state awards and grants. And again, in the last area, there are no issues found, none reported, for financial statement findings, federal and state award findings, and prior period audit findings. In your Dropbox was a copy of the management discussion and analysis. That is included now in your bound copy at the beginning of your audit report, and this is provided by management. I recommend reviewing it for more detail, provides a more non-technical format and gives insight into the trends and provides a narrative to help comprehend the information that is in the audit report. It is written by the district, and it's in addition to the report of the auditor. The financial statements will be on the consent agenda at the next meeting. Several things that are in the management and discussion and analysis that are in the district annual report that is published will also be talked about in the treasures report next meeting. Do you have any questions at this time?
Any questions? Oh, thank you. That's interesting, they changed the language.
And it's hard to find that that's changed.
And so you see it, and it's like, "What?"
You see it, and they did tell us that, but when you try to Google, "Why was it different?" or, but it does sound better than "unqualified."
Okay, no, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to twenty fifteen, sixteen budget.
Jay's going to join me again, in case he'd like to pipe in. Does everyone have a copy of this report in front of them that they can reference? Otherwise, I can bring.
A hard copy, or you mean?
Yeah, in your computer.
In our Dropbox.
Okay, I'm going to start by identifying three major changes since three weeks ago when I was in front of you proposing a budget. I want to remind the board that we were clear that it was a work in progress and needed some more time through prioritizing audit and other things, and a learning curve of coming over to Wisconsin and learning Skyward, and it just needed more time. And so I just want to identify, first, the, some, three major differences between revenue and expenses for general fund from three weeks ago and from what's being presented tonight, and then I'd like to go in and talk more about, it says "un-audited," but you now have the financial statements in front of you, so column two is not going to change from this point forward, but I'd like to talk a little more about last year to this year and the budget memo spreadsheet that was also provided to you. The one on the screen, the new one, also has a column on the far left hand to identify line numbers, so that you can quickly get to that row that I'm referring to, and specifically, line seventeen, I'll start with it, which is "Payment for Services." This shows a significant increase over three weeks ago. This has to do with open enrollment tuition, both regular and the general ed portion for students with special needs that we serve in the district. So, that one has been revised, increased over three weeks ago. The next line items are thirty and thirty-one. This is state categorical and state general aid. This has been increased, again, just learning the revenue limit formula and enrollment projection, using the three-year average. Our enrollment went up over last year by fifty-six students for this revenue limit calculation. Remind the board that that's a projection as well, so Third Friday count could change that three-year average.
And is that this Friday, the third Friday?
Yes.
So, everyone send your kids to school.
And I think we mentioned last time that we think that projection might be a little low compared to all the registrations that we were receiving, so once it all shakes out, we'll figure it out Friday to do a revised revenue limit calculation and then distribution for aid and levy.
If we approve tonight, because it's on the consensus tonight, correct, and then you do a revised based on that, will you then be bringing that revised to the six o'clock meeting?
It becomes the original budget for adoption in October.
Okay.
The timing of the proposed budget really is aligned to our annual meeting, and we need to take something to our public at the annual meeting, and we need to meet certain publication deadlines associated with that. So, we have to give it our best shot at this point in time, and there'll be a heavy dose at the annual and budget hearing when we're presenting this information of, there's lots of variables not yet worked out.
That's kind of what I'm getting at, so if we approve something tonight, though, we will still be able to make adjustments for the annual meeting.
Not for the annual meeting, but then for the original budget that is submitted to DPI.
Okay.
We won't be able to meet the publication deadlines if we come back, so you approve this tonight. We know there will be revisions, but those won't happen until the original budget.
And the original budget doesn't have to be approved by us or the public? Okay.
Correct. Yeah, we're responsible. Well, in the old days, you remember, even in July and August, we'd go to the public, and there was no way we would have the information, so for a long time, it's been that the public has had to understand, "We're bringing you a best model at this point."
Okay, thank you. That also goes for the levy. So, we'll bring the best model that we can at this time, and then when we certify later this fall, that'll determine the balance between state aid and levy. The next line item of importance for general fund is line seventy-four. Line seventy-four is the inter-fund transfer. This is the transfer from Fund Ten to Fund Twenty-seven Special Education. Fund Twenty-seven's not allowed to end in a deficit position, and so we have to zero out anything that exceeds revenue in Fund Twenty-seven. In fourteen fifteen, you'll, you see on the screen that we had a transfer of nearly six million dollars. That was greater than budgeted, greater than anticipated, primarily because we did not realize the full Medicaid reimbursement, and that's due to delayed claims. So, last year, we had to transfer more to Fund Twenty-seven to make them whole. We fully anticipate getting the balance of those fourteen, fifteen claim receipts in Medicaid, along with timely submission of claim for fifteen, sixteen, and so the inter-fund transfer for fifteen, sixteen has been reduced to bring it more in line with where we think it should be. I used a five-year average annual revenue in Medicaid to determine this decrease, and I will speak to it again when we go through the budget memo spreadsheet, because if we're getting, let's say, one and a half times next year, and then we drop back down to only the equivalent of the annual, we will see another fluctuation between Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-seven to make Fund Twenty-seven whole. Those are the three major changes from three weeks ago to tonight. If there aren't any questions, I'll go forward and start talking about the budget memo spreadsheet and the proposed budget that's before you.
Any questions? Okay, move on.
The board is familiar with the budget memo spreadsheet document, so it's laid out in the same So it's laid out in the same format that you've seen in the past, only updated to align with the current proposed budget. The local sources of revenue, new revenue. So this is just general fund and it's new revenue and new expenditures. And then we take out some of those one-time things that are not in the current year's budget. So for local sourceage, which primarily is local levy, and in this case, highly impacted by the approved four-year technology referendum, it's estimated that they will increase about $564,000. One might say, how did we pass a $655,000 technology referendum, but our local sources are only going up $564,000? And that's because other local sources are going down. The state sources increase of nearly $570,000 is a combination of the increase in state equalization, general aid, and categorical aid for that three-year rolling average of membership, full-time equivalent students going up. And then, some slight increase in federal sources due to grants and decreases in other sources. Those are combined. So if you looked at all the other sources within the general fund on your proposed budget, it's the net of those decrease in local sources. The new expenditure uses for 1516 include $592,000 of salary and benefits. This is increase for existing staff based on negotiated wage agreements and insurances, personnel benefits. The staff increases due to enrollment refer to those positions that have been approved by the board for increase in licensed teacher FTE and education assistance. Workers' compensation and general insurance has a significant increase. The district's experiencing a pretty high work comp mod right now. And we have engaged a new insurance provider to help guide us through some strategies to decrease our work comp experience, our injuries, return-to-work policies, and just all the components around work comp to bring it back in line. We're currently at a 1.27 mod, which means we're paying about 27% more than average. We'd like to be below 1.0. So that's the majority of the insurance increase. If you recall, the state property insurance pool is dissolving at the end of this year. We went out and got proposals for other providers. And although we saved on premium increase over the state pool, it still went up over prior year. Another increase in expenditures is the 1.0 Student Information Support Specialist position approved by the board, and then the technology referendum expenses of $655,000. Discontinued prior year expenditures. The first item here is that increase in the inter-fund transfer that we just spoke about. We don't anticipate that having to happen again in 1516. And so, we took it off in the discontinued from prior year. At the end of 1415, there were some advanced purchases provided, allocations provided to transportation and technology. Those will be reduced for 1516. And then the other one-time allocations for buildings and grounds, instructional services, transportation, and district technology. And then, there was also a discontinued IS secretary on the list. This brings us to available resources of $215,000. Our concerns around deficit spending last year in the general fund of $148,000 brought us to the decision to put this on the screen as well, so you could understand that we did deficit spend last year. That was primarily caused by that Medicaid lack of revenue and the larger inter-fund transfer. Otherwise, we would have not deficit spent. But, in order to stop that and not continue deficit spending and keep the fund balance within the range that the board has designated, we have added that for you to see and to reduce any surplus, I suppose, bringing the balance to $666,000, which is the difference between the general fund revenue and the general fund expenditures in your spreadsheet. At the bottom of the budget memo spreadsheet, I just have the reminder to the board. It explains further the Medicaid revenue. And then, also, just to keep in mind, if we advance allocations and allow technology and transportation to use 1516 budget dollars in 1415, we would be restoring those budgets in 1617. And so, that's a value of $132,000. So there's some things that we need to remember for 1617 budgeting as far as the Medicaid revenue and the advanced purchases. Jay, do you have anything to add?
No, but I got a feeling we're gonna move from the budget memo spreadsheet to the proposed budget. So, are there any questions on the...
Any questions?
Budget memo spreadsheet.
Should move to the proposed budget.
So we touched on this already when I was comparing it to the last presentation. And then, again, for the items that are in the budget memo spreadsheet, the proposed revenue for general fund, all sources, is estimated at $44,290,801. And that is on line number 56. That is an increase over $43,197,273,000 in 1415. The proposed expenditures for general fund are $44,224,109. And that is an increase over 1415. In 1415, it was $43,345,622. The special project funds includes Fund 21 and Fund 27. Fund 27 is a special education fund. And since that cannot go over budget, it has to balance at zero at the end of the year. The fund balance that you see there is for Fund 21. The budget has been built around the ending fund balance. And we'll be working with Mark this year to better identify Fund 21 projects and proposed budgets. We have worked to identify them by line item, but then they all get lumped together in fund balance. And so, we just need to work together closer to know which of these projects are ongoing, which ones are gonna be spending out their dollars. You know, do they have continued donations or gifts? Or is it one-time projects? So, the revenue is built similar to expenditures, but I just want the board to know that the expenditure budget is built on their fund balance by project. So that when they pull up their report, they know how much they actually have versus how much they might bring in, so that they're not overspending. So that's a work in progress for Fund 21 projects. But, that's how that is built. And right now, it's showing a small increase in fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
So a little bit of background. So Fund 21 is what they call the gift account. And we can't keep track of that in the general fund. The state prescribes. That when somebody gives the district money, and they typically want it to go for something specific, this has to be kept track of in Fund 21. And it's a very difficult budget to predict, because people's generosity isn't the same from one year to the next. And so, as Julie's describing, projecting how much is gonna be taken in and how much of that'll be spent out is something she really needs to work closely with Mark Engler then.
The debt service budget really didn't change much since last time I presented. The levy revenue is anticipating, or we will certify the levy for $3.1 million to meet the principal and interest obligations. And the expenditures are $3.6 million. The reason that the revenue is less than the expenditures in the debt service levy is because we're going to be using, it was planned to use some fund balance out of the debt service fund in order to levy for the technology referendum in the general fund. And so, as proposed to the public, we did not want to impact the tax levy by increasing for the technology referendum. And so, in order to meet the debt obligation, we will be using some debt service fund balance to pay for the required principal and interest payments for 1516. So that is why your expenditures in debt service exceed the levy revenue in line 88. At the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, 2015, the debt obligation will be $20,181,000. And that is on line 96. And finally, the food service fund, or Fund 50. This has not changed since the last time I presented. The estimated revenue is $2,568,75, with total estimated expenditures of $2,569,885. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
No questions. Just a comment. Thank you very much. Especially at the start, when you compared the difference between our last meeting and this one. In our last meeting, I had a lot of questions, was a little nervous. Thank you for taking that time and explaining it and sharpening the pencils. And these numbers look a lot better than they did a few weeks ago.
Thank you for your patience as I catch up.
They do look much better. Okay, then that is, the budget approval is part of the consent agenda this evening. So, if you have any questions, now is the time. All right, then moving on to ACT and AP results. Wendy Savasky.
Well, good evening. Tonight, I'm going to share the advanced placement and ACT results for last school year. So the results are aligned with our district vision of educating every student to achieve global success and specifically, strategic objective number one. So, the ACT is often used as a college admissions test that measured students' proficiency in English, reading, science, and mathematics. The tests are multiple choice in all four areas. And for last year's seniors, the writing component was optional. And is also, you know, as I said, used for college admission and also to barometer, how prepared are we helping our students be for college, universities, or life after high school? So, just an important note about tonight's results. These results are reflective of our graduating senior class of 2015. They are not representative or reflective of all the juniors taking the assessment last spring, because those results are very preliminary and they're embargoed at this time. So, for our graduating senior class, the composite range is 0 to 36. And our students, we went up slightly to a 22.7 is the average composite score for our graduating senior class. And Wisconsin is 22.2, which stayed the same as the prior year. And the national composite is 21. This slide just shows, just over time, the percentage of our students that participate in the ACT when it was optional for our students to take it. As I mentioned earlier, our junior class or our now-senior class, all students took it this, our last spring. So, the percentage went up slightly, along with the state and the national average of students taking the assessment went up slightly. So, this slide shows the average composite score for English. The Ready for College Benchmark, which is the green line at 18, is a benchmark that is set. And if students score above that benchmark, they are at that benchmark, they have a 50% chance of receiving a B or better in a college-level course. So you'll see that our students were at a 22.3. So we are significantly above that Ready for College Benchmark and above the state. And here is the composite score for mathematics. The Ready for College Benchmark is a 22. As a district, we were above that benchmark, which is 22.8. And the state was right at 22. So we are above the state, but this is part of the reason why we have a math PDSA, because our scores show that we are above, but there's always room to grow. And for our reading composite benchmark is 22. And you will see that our students are at 22.4. And the state is 22.5. So, although we stayed the same, the state did increase. And I think with our PDSA work that we've done for the high school for this next year, you will see that we are putting an increased focus on reading. And this is the science composite score. The benchmark is 23. And I really look at it as a celebration. We were at 22.9. Our science department has been working very hard at increasing that. And you will see over the years, reported, that is the highest that we've been and the closest to the benchmark. And we are above the state also. So, questions on ACT before I go on? No?
I got a question.
Sure.
Are the juniors this year taking, or do they, are required to take the ACT?
They will be required to all students take it again in the spring. Other questions?
And that's something that came down from the state.
Correct. Yes. All juniors in the spring of the year will be taking ACT plus writing and work keys. So, advanced placement. We offer a number of courses at our high school. And the benefit is they really prepare kids for our college-level courses, the writing skills, the problem-solving. I know when my students, or when my children took it, it was a lot of discipline to actually study and read all of the books that they needed to do. So it helped them develop incredible study habits to prepare them for college once they left our home. The courses that are AP courses, if students receive a three or higher on the exam, they are able to earn college credit, which if they do earn college credit, they stand out in the admission process and possibly could register earlier. So, this is over time to just show the last 15 years of collecting data. Over time, the number of courses that students took tests in have grown. The number of exams has grown. We did go down slightly this last year. And the number of students taking the exams. Of those 160 students, now, see if I remember right, 16 were sophomores, 69, I believe, were... believe, were juniors, and 73 seniors. So, you know, good representative of all of our students. So again, looking at the students that have received a three or higher, which is our benchmark so that they do get college credit. You will see that 75% of our students that take an AP exam do get a three or higher, which is above the state and the national average. So, this is some new data and the new way that AP is reporting their results. If you just, the ones that have asterisks, the percentage of students getting three or higher increased from the prior year. And then the third column shows the average mean score for the school district of Holman students that tested. And the next column is Wisconsin mean score, and then the national. And overall, we are above Wisconsin and the nation with the exception of biology. So, questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. And I think the ACT and AP results, Wendy, you can just shake your head, it's one of the measurements that we use to, as we're data-driven. It's one of the measurements that we use to measure our success. Thank you. Okay, then, police liaison contract, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, this has come before you pretty much the last few years, it sounds like. And basically, we're bringing forward a contract to, for a police liaison to work with our school district. They do serve most of their time at the high school and work with kids at the high school, students at the Academy on the Prairie, middle school students, majority, but also do serve and have helped out in elementary schools and so on. One of the main purposes is for students to be able to build relationships with our police liaison so that they're also comfortable in other settings to approach them and talk about their concerns and so forth. So, as you can see, in the contract, again, the cost is, has not increased much at all. It's the same as before. And we split it 50% with the Village of Holman. So, enough, there's any questions?
Any questions on the police liaison?
I got a question. How come, was it just the village that shares that cost? Not the other municipalities do because it's, I mean, I know it's the Village of Holman Police Department, but the other municipalities have kids that go to the school, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, they do not. And the police liaison, you know, the jurisdiction is the Village of Holman also. He does, that he is, works with the school district of Holman. He does go over and work with our students at the Academy on the Prairie. But say there is a police call at the Academy on the Prairie or an incident, they cannot go to the call because of the jurisdiction.
Right, it's the county.
It is the county, yeah.
Or, it's not Alaska, it's the county.
It's the sheriff, yeah.
I think, Lisa, too, when the position originated, I think part of the reason it did originate was there were many, many calls at the school. We had no police liaison, no police presence there at that point in time. So anytime we needed, because the school is located in the village, and it was a village officer. And so then, as they began to discuss that issue, then they also discussed, well, what are some other districts doing? What are some models? So beyond the use for, you know, police kind of calls, the typical calls, what could other uses be? And so that more community policing and getting to know people and getting to build those trusts and those kinds of things developed. So it was really, I think, the village came to us and asked if we might consider that. Mr. Clark, is that your recollection, too?
As you said, if we didn't have this at all, the Village of Holman would be providing all police service to the buildings because they're in the Village of Holman. And so this is actually helping to not only cover some of the cost of the person, but do some of this proactive service so that the police are someone that students know differently than someone who only reports to school when there's some kind of problem. And so, you described it very well. And through the school districts, helping to fund this, in fact, the other municipalities are, because the taxes we collect are representative of all the communities. So it is a way to create that kind of balancing that you're talking about because it serves all the multiple communities.
I just want to say, the times that I've come to the high school to volunteer for certain events, it is such a positive thing to listen to our liaison and know all the names of the kids that he knows and how he schmoozes with them and walks around the crowd. And it's a very cool thing. It's worth probably a lot more than we pay for what he's doing. Because I'm guessing also, then he also has establishments with their family, you know, he knows what they're living with. That's, it's a very, very rewarding position to watch in action. I'm proud of him. I'm proud to know him.
So, it is not on the consent agenda, correct?
Not tonight.
Not tonight? So if you have any other questions in the time being, you certainly can ask and it will be on next week's or next meeting's agenda. So then, the request for proposal process for the devices, the one-to-one devices, Greg We're just waiting for this presentation, you know, all the bells and whistles and...
We actually have a physical...
Oh my gosh.
You get all kinds of goodies tonight. We want to make sure you can see and understand. And in, the purpose of him presenting is informational, so, because we wanted to bring forward and, so you know exactly what we're, what he's been working on with the staff This is to help convince you that you might like to learn Google maybe in the future, too.
You invite me to a conference, I'll learn it. I did put the plug in for board members to be invited if they do any kind of software professional development, like for early release or something like that, that we certainly, if available, would be interested, we don't want to add any costs, but certainly would be interested in learning about that.
Yeah, that's, that would definitely be an option, something that we can make available.
Great, that would be wonderful.
So, the RFP that we've put into your Dropbox for review this week is what we would issue out to potential bidders for the purchase of between 800 and 900 Chromebooks. These are laptop-like devices that talk specifically with a service called Google Apps for Education. And this, this is a platform of things that allow the design of documents, presentations, videos, photos, all these things in a sort of collaborative environment where we can have multiple students working on different, different documents, different projects all at once. This platform and this device, we found to work very well in the classroom. There's, there's a lot of reasons behind that beside just the software that Google has created for, for education. But we've looked at this device particularly because of its long battery life. One of the things we noticed that as the electronics industry drives to kind of make devices smaller and smaller and thinner and thinner, battery life also suffers. You probably would see that with your smartphones and other, other small electronic items that you own. This is forecasted to last 13 hours once it's charged, which for a laptop or a laptop-like device is phenomenal, especially a laptop with that size of a screen. So that's one of the reasons we were led to this. And the device in your hands is the device that will be distributed to all middle school and high school teachers in the very near future. This was, even these units will be in the hands of a teacher within the next week. So, what's, what, what we've looked at further since purchasing these is what device do we want for students? And the decision we've come to is we want this same device. There were many good reasons that device was chosen. And there was some debate over, do we want a device with a smaller screen? Do we want a slightly smaller device for our students? The decision was made that this is a very good device for many reasons, some of which I'll discuss here. But we, we would like to go out to request for proposal to order this device in the quantity needed for our middle school student population. So, at this point, we are going out to RFP for just the device. We're not seeking a service. We don't believe that it will be cost beneficial to us to have the vendor who proposes or wins this, get these Chromebooks all ready for the students. You've already approved the funding, or the referendum has rather approved the funding of a position, of a full-time help desk specialist position, who is really in a job description dedicating them to, to this referendum and being there to help. And so we, we plan to engage this individual in, in this rollout heavily. And we would also bring on some temporary help to get these devices ready for students. One of the good things about Chromebooks as opposed to a Windows laptop is that they require very little time to prep for students. So we don't, though in this RFP, you'll see the option offered for a vendor to tell us how much it will cost to get the devices ready for the students. I would not forecast that we'll deem that cost-effective in the end. Between our own internal staff and people we can bring on temporarily at a very low cost, we don't believe that we will outsource that function. Essentially, we are taking these devices with their manufacturer's warranty. We're also asking the vendor, how much would it cost us to extend that manufacturer's warranty into three years? Again, I don't forecast that the cost offered will be effective to us because we can, this is a very good company to get, to continuously get parts from when repairs are needed on devices, et cetera. So we have that position hired and already on staff that will lead in the repair of these devices. And we know we can procure parts and things for these devices into the future. This is a company I've worked with, Acer, who manufactures these Chromebooks in my past job. And they're, they're very good about providing us routes to get parts and other things for needed repairs as these devices age. So we're investigating what the cost would be to get the, to get a warranty extended to three years. But if not, we will go with the manufacturer's one-year warranty. That's what's proposed here. And of course, I'm seeking input on, in this presentation. Then we'll talk a little bit about the timeline. If, if this evening you looked at this and thought that it was a proposal worthy of moving forward, we could go out to bid yet this week. We would look at getting bids back in very early October. And we could come to you with the recommended winning bidder at the first October board meeting. So our goal is to get these into the hands of students by the second week in November for eighth graders. So that gives you some background information on this, and I'll ask if you have any questions.
I just, question around logistics, and I really like the looks of it. Personally, I like the size of the big screen.
Yeah.
From a student functionality and, forgive me, I'm...
No, absolutely.
I don't know enough about this. Do they get a carrying case with this? Is this something that fits into the backpack? Just works with that?
We intend to provide a small carrying case with, well, a sleeve essentially with it, that will provide some padding in the instance that the device might be dropped or put into a backpack with books where the, where the backpack's thrown onto a tile floor. So...
It's dropped at home when they come through the door?
Yeah, exactly. So one of the reasons we lean toward this device over others that were available is because the plastic it's made of seems a bit more durable than some competitors' devices. And it's, it seems easier to grasp and to hold on to, not as slippery as some competitors' services. So, but yes, the devices would come with a sleeve that we would provide the students. And the students would be educated on if you, unless you have two hands on the device, if we see you in school, for instance, you need to have this device in its sleeve. Otherwise, two hands on the device while you're carrying it and things like that. So there's a lot of education behind this with any device if we want to, I guess, maintain our stock of devices in good condition. But, and the screen size, one of the things that, that I talked to administration at the middle school about was that in using carts of Chromebooks that we've kind of used as pilots in this district before I got here, one of the comments from students was, when we use Chromebooks for administering standardized testing, the screen size of the smaller screens that we'd been using before was not, was not a likable feature. So although we like the small devices, idea of a smaller screen, smaller device that can be more easily transported, carried, weighs less in the backpack, we think that, that this is the right choice in this situation. So, and they also have touchscreens, which is kind of something relatively new with Chromebooks. But it's something we believe that a lot of apps that will be of use in the classroom are going to require in the next year to two years. So we want to be prepared for that.
Was there much of a difference in the cost between the smaller screens and the touchscreens?
Uh, yeah, to be honest, I think, and I, because we haven't even gone out to bid, I have no idea what price per se we will get on these with the quantity we're buying. But I would guess 90 to $100 a device. So we're definitely, we're definitely paying a bit more for it. But also, I mean, when you look at how often these get used and how many hours a day or a week a student could spend staring at that screen using this device, we really like to give them the touch functionality and a screen size that is good to present information on and work with, information on and create documents or presentations. So that's what led us to that. Any other questions?
Any questions?
So I think, I don't think we have to do board approval consensus, that this is the right direction. I think we appreciate you're bringing this to us. I know usually we may have a report just saying we use the, you know, the bidding process, but I think because it is so public, it's appreciated that you bring that information to us so that the public can see it as we are moving forward.
I have a question, actually, that we came forward and we're sharing this type of information. Is it possible if we have, bring the successful bid, because that's what comes for approval, you like to review it, and then you like to wait and then do a consent? Is that something that you would want to do a review and consent on the same evening or not? Or you want to keep the same depending on timeline? I don't know.
Oh, I think whatever expediates it.
I think too, though, you may, depending on the results of the bidding process, there may be something different or unique. And as you said, you've got a couple different things in there for them to present. So if that becomes the case and it's something unusual, you know, Mr. Clark would be able to help you with the, whether that's something that would normally come to the board for consideration first. So those kind of maybe, I don't want to say extreme, but unusual situations, then it might be better to have us see it and then review it and then come back in next, the other meeting. But if it just goes very routinely and, you know, there's a, it's obvious who the successful bidder is and, you know, in some cases, it's not a local, you know, company in town if, you know, sometimes there's some of those kind of things. But I don't see any of those situations happening. But then I would, if that sounds okay with the, Tim? I know you're one of those, you like to see...
Yeah, I'm going to say, you know, I like to be consistent. And, you know, I think anytime you, you start to create exceptions, then what's the exception? What's the rule? And I generally like, unless there is something of a legal or a time-sensitive nature, like to just stick with the practice of discussion at one meeting and action at the next. Just from a consistency, then that's what the public is also used to.
Okay.
But that's, you know, and Cheryl referenced it, that's kind of been my stance all along in my time on the board is unless there's something unique about it, I just generally don't like the introduction and action in the same night.
That delay, getting it in the hands of the teacher, students, that process?
What would delay it by two weeks?
It would delay it by two weeks. And then, so, so once the device has actually arrived, which we would presume to be probably two weeks after we notified the successful vendor, they would need to be prepared here before they got into the hands of students. So it, it is... So it, it is true that if, if we did the, presented and then consented next at the following meeting, they, this likely would not make the middle school's sort of dream rollout date an option. But of, of course, we can work with whatever, whatever we need to work with at the end.
We can see.
Yeah, so it's, the option is there, but it's not, not absolutely necessary.
I have a question. Is there any way that, as we look, when the agenda comes out, on the proposed agenda, is there any way that we could get pre-information on this so that we have, we see the bids, it's coming up, it comes up a week or two weeks before our meeting, so that our heads, we can tell the public, we saw this in two weeks? And I know what you're saying, Tim, and I agree, I think that's very important. But I'm thinking of all these teachers and kids waiting to jump onto this really exciting thing in their hands. They're chomping at the bit, I'm pretty sure. You're training teachers right now, you've got teacher leaders that are being trained in this, I don't know, middles...
Ryan, you might be able to reference the...
You know, do you have an opinion, Ryan?
He's been working very hard.
Yeah.
If you could do the microphone, Ryan.
Yeah. We, we've had a one-to-one committee meeting all summer too, and Ryan's led that.
I've been following that.
And they've kind of, they've had a calendar and been working towards certain goals and so on, trying to help make those goals happen.
Right.
We can, we can make anything work, okay? You know, when, when the devices come in, I think that the, the biggest thing that we want to make sure that we do is we do it right. And so when the devices come in, whenever that would be to make the right decision, then we just want to make sure that we take the proper steps, working with Greg and working with our teachers and everyone else, along with working with parents, to make sure that everyone's comfortable, that, that everyone understands our expectations and protocols, so that when we do roll this out, that we roll it out correctly, and, and that we have as much information in everyone's hands as possible. And so, you know, if, if it were to come back that, you know, in, in two weeks we were able to do this and get the devices here two weeks earlier, that, of course, you know, if, if we are able to get the devices out in, into students' hands earlier, that would be wonderful. But if the process lends itself to saying, you know what, we need this to come next week, and then, or in two weeks, and we need to wait for that to happen, then when that takes place, we just continue with our planning, and, and we do our best to, to meet the deadline when it comes to there. So that was a really waffling answer, but really, what it, what it comes down to is we'll work with, we'll work with whatever i- is the right thing to do, and, and I trust in that.
I, I appreciate that answer too, because I think that's what administrators do and teachers do. But what...
Kate, if you would, I think other board members wanted to speak to this too, so Anita?
Um, I just, I just wanted to say, I'm okay with, I, I don't mind, and I totally get your point, Tim, too, with having to go through the process that we have set up, but if we can make occasional exceptions without them becoming the rule, I'm okay with that. So I was wondering, when we, are we gonna go around the table tonight and just, are we gonna do consensus and I'm not sure how we're gonna decide?
I think the process is what was on the agenda, so I don't know that the, maybe the process does include the, how many meetings do we need to see it kind of thing. I guess if you were looking at the whole process, it would be when we let out for bids, when the bids would, what the deadline would be, what would come to the board for the first meeting, and what would come to the, and would we need a second meeting?
Because as gracious as Ryan is being, and everybody else involved, I work in a middle school that had the one-to-one technology rollout a couple of years ago, and they are chomping at the bit. And I'm just picturing if they would have come back in my school a couple of years ago and said, put the skids on. It's gonna be a couple more weeks, it would have been like keeping a pot, lid on a pot of boiling water for two weeks, you wouldn't have gotten a lot done. So in the interest of the kids getting a lot done at the middle school, I'm okay with, you know, going ahead and looking at something and figuring it out in the same night, but not as a rule.
I had a kind of a backup question to, I think Kate was saying it. So could we get the decision on what bids, you know, which bid seems to be the best early enough so that would buy us time prior to a meeting? I mean, I, I think the issue that Tim is referring to is that we don't want to be, have something in our box, you know, twenty-four hours before, or forty-eight hours before a meeting, and then having to make a decision. But if we were able to get this, you know, ahead of time...
And I don't, I don't want to speak for Tim, but I think part of that is the issue is how soon we get it, but it's also the public getting that information. And so I, if I'm not wrong, Tim, that that first meeting not only provides us an opportunity to discuss and to review the bids, but it also gives the public an opportunity to, to see that. And so that would be their only time, whereas when we do the information at the first meeting of the month, and then the second meeting of the month is usually the voting and, and that kind of thing. But could you review, maybe, could you review if you let out for bids tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
And how long of a deadline did you have on that?
We would leave the bid open for vendors for about two weeks and require a timeline that would get the bids back to us by October 1st or thereabouts, and then make a decision in the days to come.
So let me offer this as an option. Since we have a board retreat meeting on October 5th, the first Monday of the month, if you would have enough time between the first and the fifth then to present the board, we could open that meeting with an open meeting, discuss that, it would be a public thing, and then the next week we could, at our regular meeting, we could then vote on it, and keep, keep that two opportunities, you know, out there, but still meet your timeline. Do you think that is possible? Is that...
Yeah, I believe it would be possible. I guess this is, this is more of a RFP requesting a product than it is a RFI requesting extensive information where we need to...
Right.
...ponder through a lot of different services and the ways a company would deliver them. So it's, I think it is a fairly, once we get the bids back and we realize which companies are reliably able to provide the devices and the time they stay, it's, it's really a decision based on cost. So, so not as extensive an analysis needed as with some more complicated...
Like a construction...
Yeah, exactly.
So would that fit then, Tim, with that?
Yes. I mean, my position is, is always process always matters. The ends don't justify the means. Process is important, even when the ends is very, very good. Because if you use process and it works for you, sometimes it will work against you, and if you're always consistent in following process, then it's always equitable, and that would work wonderfully.
And I like process too, so that's why I'm trying to find a solution that could possibly work with that, because it's not just us getting the information. I think this is a very public vote, you know, so if there is, having that, public have those opportunities too, to see the information would be. So I think we have a solution to that, so we can move forward with that. I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
Can I say some stuff?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so the computer, I really like it, like the size, so as a student, I'm gonna be talking about it. But the battery life for thirteen hours is amazing, and the storage is really good. But the one concern that I have is the color of white, where over time, like if, let's say someone's writing an essay or something, and there's a pen mark, the pen mark will show up.
Yeah.
So is there a chance to go black?
Uh, that's a very good question, actually. And originally, we had said definitely we want to go with black, and the company had given us the impression that they may begin making this device in black. Presently, it's only made in white. We've now been told we, we would have the option of ordering it in black, but it would mean that they would need to make a custom batch. It wouldn't cost more, but we'd wait an extra four weeks. So I'm not certain that, I, I understand your point, and it would be my preference, undoubtedly, were it available in as timely a fashion. But it's, it's unfortunately not available in as timely a fashion.
And can you tell me then, in the future, like next year, then you would need to order more to replenish for the sixth graders coming in?
Yeah, so the idea would be that as a student gets their device, they sort of take ownership of its care and whatnot, and it moves, the physical device moves with them each year, though we may, we would collect them over the summer. But they would be the ones responsible for the care of their device, and we would replenish the lower grade levels. And then with next year's referendum allotment, we would also be purchasing for the high school, for the, the grade levels of high school that wouldn't be bringing theirs up from the middle school, so.
So the high school, they are getting some this year or not?
Uh, no. The, the high school has carts of similar devices in sort of pilot areas, and the middle school has those carts of units now that would get moved possibly to the high school and other elementaries. So they, they are using the devices, but not in a device assigned to, in an individual student manner, so.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Any other questions before he gets away?
Do you want to collect these, or do you just want to...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I have a couple of questions, so I'm keeping mine for a little bit. I mean, this evening, I'll give it back at the end of the night.
Thank you.
So consent agenda items, we have five items on the consent agenda. Any that you would like to have pulled out separately?
Thanks, Greg. Or I mean a retirement tonight.
Okay, Dr. Mueller, did you want to make a comment about personnel report?
Yeah, we do have a retirement happening at the end of this school year, and Mary McCormick, who works in our kitchen at the high school, it was very, we're sad, because she's been here for twenty-four years, but it was very nice, you know, just speaks volumes to her ki- her dedication to let us know now, so we're able to find someone to fill her, her position. But her, she, what's so special about her, that I've learned about her as, in doing this, is she keeps connections with students even after they graduate, and she attends their events and so on, and she even was dedicated to a yearbook one year, which really speaks high volumes to her, her character. So she'll be missed, so.
And you said at the end of the school year?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
I don't have to approve her retirement.
Well, consent agenda. So I would, if there are, oh, I'm gonna, please, excuse me. There are nothing to be pulled out separately, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. So is there a second?
A second.
Um, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Board member reports in discussion. I know that board committees have begun to meet, so that's a good thing. So if you have any committee reports that you'd like to give, you can do so at this time. And I will call on Jeff first.
Uh, this year for homecoming, I heard that we are not doing like powder puff girls football and/or, I think we're just doing volleyball in general. But as I'm talking to students, they would really like to see the girls' powder puff football, because last year and all the years previous, everyone's enjoyed it. But the negatives apparently are that coaches are gonna get mad because the players might get hurt, but as you're signing up with sports anyways, there's always a risk of injury. So I would ask to overlook that and let them play football.
So is that, Jeff, taken care of by a committee at the, I know there's usually a committee that puts on homecoming and that kind of thing. Have you, you heard anything from that committee or...
Are you talking about students or adults?
Well, I think, isn't there a joint committee of students and adults that do the homecoming?
Uh, I think it, not, like, are you, like, yeah, there's a committee that controls the activities, but they're not the one that shut down powder puff football.
Okay. So maybe, I, you know, that leads me to have some questions, so maybe if Dr. Mueller would reach out to Bob, and we could have something in our weekly update about that.
I can sure do that.
Okay.
I think there were some concerns of safety and concussions of students and so forth from some prior incidents that had occurred in previous years, I had heard, so, but I will do that, thanks.
Okay, great. Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, nope.
Okay, thank you for your comments on the devices and that. It's good to hear what students think of those sorts of things. So then Anita, Jay Gazinski.
Um, just observing the no powder puff football thing, my daughters were, love that. We were just talking about that this weekend, in fact. I can't believe you brought that up, because isn't powder puff football, it's just played with flags?
Yeah, just flag football.
It's supposed to.
Yeah, the concussion part is a big question mark to me. I went to the welcome back ceremony, and as I said before, it was pretty amazing, and I would like to thank all the staff that were there and participated and made all the noise in the gym that morning. Pretty amazing, so welcome back, and I look forward to the powder puff football update, because now I'm really curious, and that's all I have.
Okay, Kate Mayer?
Um, everything that Anita just said. My daughters played in the powder puff too, so.
Okay.
And none of them are too messed up.
Anything about the SULC, has the SULC committee met yet?
Our, our meeting is coming up on September 21st.
Okay.
So by the next board meeting, I'll have a report on that.
All right, thank you. Lisa?
I don't think I have anything to add other than, you know, between Julie and Jay with the budget process and, you know, going through an audit is nerve-wracking, and having to wait for numbers to come through is very stressful, because people are looking at you for information, and sometimes the information that you have at that time is not, is kind of confusing or not what people want to hear. So thank you to working on the, on the budget process, because it's pretty intense.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you. Mr. Menninger, Tim Menninger?
Um, I might as well throw my two cents in on the, the powder puff, as, play on that as well. And I come from a different, it is a very physical game, as I've sat and watched it, and that doesn't bother me, my, my kids, we play a lot of physical games. What always did concern me was every year, there were some people who chose to wear track spikes and played in that game. And that was very dangerous. That always was a concern, because there was, you know, a lot of people that, because of the sharper spikes, and they were trying to get, it's usually in the evening, the grass is a little slippery, so they'd wear metal track spikes to try and get a grip, and that oftentimes would create some injuries. So that, that's always been a concern that I had. On to just a couple of other things, we did have our Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting tonight, spent a lot of time talking about the presentation that we presented at the annual meeting, some, some information there on just protections as always in buildings and things like that, so that will be coming up at the annual meeting. We started a little bit of work on policy review tonight, and we're in really good shape on, on the Buildings and Grounds Committee with policy. I think we've got just a few that we're gonna work on this year, and they're not even due this year, so we're in really great shape in that committee, so good committee to be on. And then I just, a couple of comments here, just, you know, sometimes you, you really great things happening, and, and, you know, talking about the early retirement notice and just the type of quality person that is, and I think that's just awesome. You know, the other thing is sometimes you know how good it is, but you sometimes take it for granted, but, you know, there's been a lot of controversy in some other districts around busing, and it sure makes you appreciate what we have here in the Holman, Holman District. So thank you to everybody, another great start to the school year, and thanks for everyone who continues to make this a great district.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, a reminder on the busing issue, I know I am in rotary with Mr. Nelson, and he has taken quite a bit of heat for that, and has had to pay a few fines to the foundation there for that. And I did, I sat in the audience and thought, are we happy we are where we are right now? Because those decisions were made, you know, many times, and people do question them. Oftentimes it comes up, why don't you ha- you know, contract out for those services? Can't you save all this money? And this is a prime example of why we don't contract out, because that, I don't think that's something we would have ever done, is probably some of those things that they did. So good reminder of that. We did have, our Personnel and Governance Committee did meet, we did a review of some of the activities from the previous year, and then we also looked at the policies that we have to review, and some of them, interestingly enough, have been things we've been talking about for a few years, so that's good. I know that the student attendance one that is on the SULC's committee for review here later on, it's something we may be actually doing some co-opting with you on that, because we have some things about state tournament attendance and what our current policy is about that, and how we handle it, because currently we say we're, if fifty-one percent of the students sign up for a fan bus, we're gonna close our high school. Well, we don't have enough minutes in our high school to do that without having to add on someplace else, so that's kind of creeped in there. And then now what do we do with those students if we don't close our high, if we don't... those students if we don't close our high, if we don't close a school? What do we do with those students who want to attend a school event? And so that's kind of in the.
Looking at like possibly a joint meeting?
No, I think probably we'll either share what our thoughts are and have you guys figure out a solution to it, or you would refer, review your part of it, and then we would be reviewing it, and somewhere along the line, both committees would look at a proposal that would come from probably us.
We'll CC each other with minutes and such.
Exactly, exactly. Um, so, and who knows, it may just stay where it's at, too, so we're, we're still trying to figure those things out. But yeah, it's a good group experience, so those policies will be pretty good to, to go through some, some difficult kind of policies as well, but very good. I know, Tim, you may be seeing some things, there's been a few community groups that have approached us about some of the grounds, the grounds part of the Buildings and Grounds, and so you may have your hands full this year on some of those discussions that may be taking place, but I did want to report out on the Community Collaborative, I, you know, don't know that I've reported some of the recent successes, but, you know, we are working with Gunderson Healthcare and with the Y, and they are looking at providing services for youth and for, for seniors in that building. I think many of you may have seen the gift that's been committed from QuickTrip, so a hundred thousand dollars was committed by QuickTrip for that project, and so things are, continue to move along, and I know Dr. Mueller and I are gonna be meeting with some of the folks from that committee as well, to look at what, as we see those numbers coming up in our school district, and as we see approvals by the village for more and more residential developments, we may see some of those numbers go up a little bit sooner than what we had anticipated, so we want to, I think, continue to be proactive in looking at what that might mean for the district and our building, long-term building plans. So those were just a few of the things I had. Meeting schedule, the twenty-fourth is a CISA for Outreach in West Salem, September twenty-eighth is our marathon meeting, six o'clock is our board meeting, seven is our budget hearing, and eight is our annual meeting, and then the fifth, we have the board retreat, work with Dr. Mueller and the folks from.
Crown Global.
Crown Global, thank you. And then I know in October, later October, just wanted to mention that in later October, we have the Wasby School Board Association meeting that is being held up north.
Cochran.
Cochran Fountain City, I think is where it is. So the twenty-first, and so would really appreciate if people would consider attending that, and that's all I really have. So the student attendance, Kate, is there anything other than just routine review on that student attendance policy that you're looking at, or is that?
Well, Wendy's out there, I, we're never sure if it's more than routine or not, I think a lot of it is routine, but there's always input from committee members, too. Is there something you want to add to that?
So right now, we are not looking at attendance, there are two policies for next Monday, our reading instruction and acceptance of this policy.
So we're changing that up?
It's the same one you asked for, but it is on our to-do list.
So the student attendance being on your to-do list as though is just the routine review of that policy, so if you had any major concerns about the current policy, tonight would be the night to, you know, express those.
There's just one part with the student attendance, is the change in the truancy, how we have to notify by first-class mail, so there'll be something simplistic that we might have to look at, just the wording in there due to a new, the new legislation.
All right.
Okay.
I think there are several policies coming up this year for SALC and probably other committees, too, that legislation is, is forcing us to change some of the things that we do and how we handle them.
Yeah, I think you're getting the most, most of those.
I think we have a little.
Yeah, you do have the bulk, yeah.
So any other business, anything, board meeting reflection, any other business to bring, otherwise I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.